Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennfield Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being video recorded and broadcast live on Pennfield TV government access channel, which includes Spectrum Cable 1303, online at pennfieldtv.org, and social media platforms, Facebook and YouTube via Town of Pennfield Television. Following the proceedings, the video recording will be available on the town's website and on streaming devices Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. You can search for Pennfield TV in your app store, and it is free. Tonight, if anyone wishes to address the board on any of the public hearing matters, we will provide you opportunities to do that in several manners. One is you can, if you're home and you want to phone in, you can call that number there. There's a computer over here I'll look at once in a while to check to see if anybody has submitted electronic comments. That's another way for folks to do things. And then, of course, if you're here in person and you want to come up and speak, we'll give people an opportunity to do that as well. We certainly encourage that kind of participation, and in fact, we point out each and every month that we think the town does a good job of making sure its citizens are aware of what's on our agenda so that they can come in and speak about it, or, as I said, send in an email or phone in a call. The town does that by posting the agenda on the website and here at Town Hall, by sending postcards to property owners that live within a certain distance or own property within a certain distance of the subject property, and also by having applicants post the signs on the property so when you're walking or driving by, you can see that something's up with that property, you can call and ask, and ask what, as I said, we think that it works well. Tonight's hearing, we're going to start with a very brief work session, take care of the minutes from last meeting and any tabled matters. Tonight, we happen to have none. And once that work session is done, we'll start into tonight's public hearings. There are three of them. As I said earlier, we'll ask first the applicant to come up to one of these tables and give us names and addresses of who's going to be speaking. And then usually what we do is we have the board member that's been assigned to be the lead member on a particular case walk the applicant through the process. The reason we do that is not to cut people off from speaking, but it's just that every applicant, as many of you know, have submitted very thorough written applications with a lot of maps, diagrams, et cetera. So the issues are pretty much fleshed out by that written application. So we just find it more efficient to be able to walk people through the applications. But certainly, everyone will be given a fair chance to add any information they like and respond to any comments or questions that there may be. So having said all that, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, fantastic. Let's go to the minutes from the September meeting, which we've had a chance to review. May I have a motion on those?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion to approve is written. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and again, no tabled applications, so let's launch right into tonight's public hearings, please. First one.
Right. Todd and Joan Claffin, 905 Wayland Road, Pennfield, New York, 14526, request approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a shed with less setback than permitted under Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 905 Wayland Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Todd and Joan Claffin and is zoned R120. SBL number 124.14-1-22, application number 25Z0032.
Good evening.
Hello?
Could you state your name and address?
Todd Claffin, 905 Wayland Road, Pennfield.
Thank you. So you want to put a shed in?
Correct.
And you want the shed to be seven feet from your property line, September, right?
Correct.
In a nutshell? And as I understand it from your application, the reason that that's the location is mostly because of a slope that exists within, in your yard that makes it either difficult or expensive because of the grading that would need to be done to put the shed in?
Correct.
And the only other potential place that could be would have the opening of the shed at the bottom of the slope, which would potentially bring water into the shed, and you've been advised against doing that, right?
Correct.
Okay. I think it's important to note that the neighbor to the east of you, so the one that would be closest to this, wrote a letter or wrote a note to the board indicating that they approved that they had no issue with this, correct?
Correct.
That's really important for future. We like to see that. Utilities, any utilities going to the shed?
No, there will be no power.
No power, no water?
No.
You're not going to be using it to host, like, bandstands and...
I don't plan on it, no.
Storage of what?
Strictly storage of deck, things from the deck and perhaps lawn equipment.
Okay, okay. And there was at one point another shed on the property that you took in, somewhere between 2000, 2005, right, that you took down?
Yes, there was.
So there's no...
When we moved on to it in 1997, there was an old shed between the two maple trees in our backyard, and that lasted about 10 years, and we tore it down.
And there's no other sheds or accessory structures on the property?
Correct.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
You said no lights? Lights?
No, we won't have any electricity to there, no.
Any other questions from the board?
All right, I don't see any electronic comments. I don't see the little... Boy, I just clicked the wrong button here. Nellie. Got it back, got it back. But I don't see anything here for the phone. Why are you looking at me? I don't see anything here for the phone, so... Is anyone waiting on the phone?
No, we'll let you know there's a caller.
Okay, so I won't bring that up again until you tell me somebody's on the phone. Thank you very much. All right. Anybody in the audience care to speak about this application? No. All right, let's proceed with the environmental question.
All right. For Seeker, I would make a motion to declare this a type-two action, requiring no further request.
Second.
All right, we have a Seeker motion declaring it a type-two and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And now the merits?
And for the merits, I would make a motion to approve it. It's, I understand exactly why they're wanting to put it in the location that they're putting. It's still seven feet, so I guess I don't really consider that a large variance. The neighbor is fine with it. It's not going to affect the environmental or the aesthetic environment of the neighborhood. I would make a motion to approve.
I'll second that. So we have a motion to approve for the reasons stated by Matt and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Second application, please.
Brian Evans, Brew Team New York LLC, 3108 Vestal Parkway East, Vestal, New York, 13850, requests approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a drive-through coffee shop with less front setback than permitted under Section 250-5.7-D3 of the code at 1960 Empire Boulevard. The applicant is also requesting approval for a special use permit for signage under Section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow more than one building sign, whereas a maximum of one building sign is permitted under Section 250-10.13-C of the code. Greater, let's see, greater overall building sign area than permitted under Section 250-10.13-B of the code, larger traffic control signage than permitted under Section 250-10.17 of the code, and a freestanding sign that is larger than permitted under Section 250-10.12-B of the code, and taller than permitted under Section 250-10.12-E of the code at 1960 Empire Boulevard. Property is currently or formerly owned by 1968 Empire Associates LLC and is zoned GB, SBL number 093.02-1-15.1, application number 25Z0033.
Can you repeat that?
Wow. Good job, good job as well. Again, may we have your name?
Hi, Larry Adler, and I'm with Brew Team New York LLC.
Okay. So the plan here, and there's a application pending in front of planning board as well, but the plan here is for the, to demolish the building that formerly housed Chili's Restaurant there on Empire Boulevard, near Baytown Plaza, let's say, and to construct a, in essence, a drive-through coffee shop.
Right.
Seven Brew is the name of the company that wants to do it. And you're in here asking for the things that Shannon just mentioned, so let's go through them one by one, and we'll bring up the graphics and stuff. But in essence, this operation is literally just a drive-through. You're not, people aren't going to be parking their cars and walking in and ordering stuff and walking back to their cars. They're going to be waiting in queue with their cars to buy whatever products you're going to be selling.
That's great. It's a drive-through only.
Right.
And it's beverage only.
Okay. So let's start first with the setback variance request. Is that for a canopy only, or is it for the building as well?
Well, I think that the closest point is the canopy. I had a conversation with Andy earlier. So the canopy is the closest structure to the property line, and so that's where the variance is. And just to step back, we have, because it's a corner lot, there's two, in essence, two front yards, and so we're okay from the Empire Boulevard, but on Brand Point, that's where we're seeking the variance. You know, and I sent in a site plan that overlays our proposed building with the existing Chili's building.
Right.
And we're within a two feet, a little bit more than two feet from where the existing Chili's building is as it relates to Brand Point.
Okay, so Chili's is closer to Brand Point than you will be. Is that what you're saying?
No, I think...
Or just the opposite?
Yeah, we're two feet close, a little more than two feet, two to three feet closer than the Chili's building.
So you're saying Chili's would have needed a variance to be built anyways?
Yeah, again, you know, we weren't here, but there, it's about 50, I think that, I think it was 53 feet from the property line where 80 feet is required.
And what's the purpose of the canopy?
It's to provide shelter from the elements for the, so we have servers that come out to greet the cars with an iPad and take their orders and deliver it back to the vehicles.
Okay, similar to Chick-fil-A.
I was going to say Sonic.
Sonic, too.
Chick-fil-A does that, too.
Yeah. So, okay.
Kind of like Chick-fil-A meets Starbucks.
How many people or cars do you anticipate? I mean, I know it's not going to be all day the exact same number, but at the busiest time of the day...
Yeah.
Let's say, after the initial, like, we're grand opening rush, which I'm assuming you're anticipating, like, on a normal, typical day, what is the most number of cars?
Usually, there's, you know, six to eight cars in a queue on a typical, you know...
That's the busiest, that would be the busiest?
Saturday at 10:00 AM. Too late, 9:00 AM.
I think this has about 25, a queuing for 25 in the two drive lanes, and this site also has a third lane, which is either an escape lane or can be used for additional stacking.
And how many servers would you, so it's three lanes, right? Is that what they call it?
Two lanes, typically.
Two lanes?
Yeah.
So only two cars get served at a time, or is it stacking in a way that four cars would be served at a time?
So the, you know, they'll take the orders that are closer to where the, there's no drive-through window, so the server will come out with the beverages to the car, and as the cars line up, they'll walk down with the iPad. So, you know, typically, as soon as the beverages are up, they're delivered to the car. So I mean, you know, there's, as many people in the queue will be, their orders will be taken, and it's usually about three minutes, three to four minutes from the...
Is there a mobile app as part of this, where you can preorder?
No, not preorder.
So at other locations, the total number of cars you're talking about, that's typical? Even at your busiest locations, you're talking eight, you said six to eight cars?
Yeah, and again, during peak hour, you know, we like to have at least 18 to 20 cars in a queue. This has, you know, more than that, especially, it's like 25, and if you add in the third lane, it goes up even more.
So the setback variance, if granted, wouldn't impede your ability to fully staff all those lanes and...
No.
No effect on car safe traffic or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
Is this the same or similar setup you have, let's say, there's a Brockport location, right? Is it similar to what's...
Yeah, all of the locations are pretty much very similar, you know, depending on the dimensions and layout of the property.
And so if we said no, then what would have to happen?
Well, you know, the, if you said no, the...
The variance, pretty much.
To the variance, we couldn't achieve, we wouldn't be able to locate here because of the 80-foot setback would not allow us to properly...
It's not that you wouldn't be able to, I guess, redraw your plans, you just, you wouldn't go in? Okay.
Not, you know, I don't think anybody, if you take 80 feet from Empire and 80 feet from Brand Point, I don't think you have any land left.
So any other questions on the variance?
No.
For that specific one?
For that specific one, for the setback?
No.
No. All right, so let's go to the building mounted signs. You're asking for a lot. I don't think you need them all, but if you would go through and explain where they are and why you need them, number one, and then I'd like to talk, maybe get Shannon and Andy involved as well, is, you know, what do Chili's have? And let's compare that to what you're asking for.
Okay.
Fire away.
So the first thing, you know, in looking at the variance that we, the application we put in, before I hit the building signs, one thing that, you know, the building signs to us is very important, it's our brand.
Right.
So we'd like to have the three signs that are on the building, on the upper, that, say, the Seven Brew on the side, and then the medallion in the front elevation. Those are critical to the brand and the trademark. So what we discussed internally was withdrawing the request for a pylon sign. So we had a freestanding pylon sign that was just under 90 square feet, and it was, it exceeded the height, and, you know, with the building signage, didn't think that we needed to do this. There's some locations where it's, you know, the visibility isn't as good as this, so we will withdraw the request for that pylon sign.
Okay, so let's go back, so you're asking for three building signs, then? Is that what you're saying?
So in the application, in our prototypical design, there's three, the Seven Brew signs, and then, yeah, in the front elevation, it's really traffic directional signage that has the chevrons and it says "drive-through."
Yeah.
We're all about ease and getting people to go in the right way when they should be going the right way.
Makes sense.
If that's considered signage and that's, you know, that one is not as important as the Seven Brew signs.
Okay, so let's talk about the three, then. Which one faces Empire Boulevard? Is that what you've called the front there?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. So then what faces Brand, which faces Brand Point? One of the, one of those?
Right.
And then the other Seven Brew then faces, let's say, what the heck's the other way? U of R or whatever that is?
Yeah, well, it would be if you're coming down Empire, you'd be, you'd see the sign of it.
Yeah.
The side of it, because you don't see the front facade.
If you're driving on Empire, let's say, from Webster, you're going to see one that faces Brand Point.
Yeah.
If you're driving on Empire from Creek Street, you're going to see one that faces Creek Street, and if you're kind of right in front of the building, you're going to see the big emblem.
Right.
All right, I'm okay with that. I don't know that Chili's, Chili's must have had something pretty comparable.
Do they have a pylon? They had the, a big...
They got approved for a 50-square-foot freestanding sign. Right, okay, but these guys are withdrawing that, but the three, I'm okay with, they look nice.
And just sorry, to compare to Chili's, it was one on the front and the freestanding, that was it? Or did they have two on the sides as well?
Chili's, Chili's actually got approved for three building signs.
Yeah, I thought there were three.
Yeah, they initially came in with eight, but they got it down to three.
Because of the way that they're located, or where this property is located on Empire Boulevard?
Right.
I agree, Dan, that three makes sense, but...
Yeah, you know, it's, I know there's traffic lights there, but cars, when the light is green, they do move, so, okay. And the only other signs on the building, then, are those arrows that you were talking about?
Yeah, the chevrons with, that say "drive-through" and...
Okay, those are signs, Andy, just because they're signs or, you know, they're not advertising type things, they're there for safety, so I'm okay with those.
Yeah, same thing.
Okay. Any other questions about the building mounted signs?
No.
No.
So the fact that we still have those five, that means that there is the request for more total square footage is still in front of us?
Correct.
Okay, I think you would, why does, why do those three big signs have to be as large as they are, resulting in you having more square footage than allowed?
It's our prototypical signage, and it's just for readability from, you know, when you're not right on the property, just a brand identity.
Okay, well, and again, I understand that, especially because we want cars on Empire Boulevard to see that well in advance before they have to make that turn.
I view it as a safety concern.
Right. So, and the other thing, I think this is correct, Andy, that if we could pull that back up again, one of those Seven Brew signs, one on the sides, yeah. So we measure that by drawing an imaginary rectangle around that, so... The entire perimeter of... Yeah, so that adds to the square footage as well. All right, any other questions on the square footage issue?
No.
And then you withdrawn the other two about the freestanding, I believe.
Well, yeah, so there is one directional signage.
Oh, yeah, larger, larger than allowed.
Right.
So talk to, I mean, honestly, that makes sense to me. This is all drive-through, you want cars to know which way they're going and...
It's critical, and this is at the point where they're entering the drive-through, so...
Yeah. Okay, any questions on that from anyone?
No.
All right, so I think...
So you're not having that freestanding one either, right there?
The directional sign, this one, yes. We'd like, that's important, just to make sure cars are going the right way.
I agree, I just wanted to...
The pylon sign.
Yeah, the big one. Yeah.
That one's gone, got it.
All right. I haven't been informed that anyone's on the phone. I don't see any electronic comments, so I will ask, anyone in the audience care to speak about this? No? Okay, I know you still have an application pending before the planning board, so whatever we do tonight doesn't mean this is over, but having said that and no further comments...
I have a few other questions.
Oh, go ahead, yeah.
Sorry. My, it has to do with egress, ingress...
Ingress, egress?
Yeah, into the plaza or how you get here. What is the preferred way of getting in? I'm just, was trying to figure that out. Is it through Empire? And is there enough signs for that to get in and out of?
So the Empire is a right-in, right-out only.
Okay.
So I would anticipate that more traffic is probably going to come off of Brand Point Drive.
Okay, that is a right-in only there?
Off Empire.
Right-in and right-out only.
Okay.
That's for this one, down here.
Yeah, there's an island that...
And this is the only structure that is in this, right?
On this lot, yeah.
Chili's was the old Waldron's, right?
It was a Pizza Hut.
Pizza Hut in Sal's Burgland.
Okay.
Poor Sal, we hardly knew you.
Waldron's, man, that's going back.
My mom worked there for years.
It's nice, I went there once.
I frequented Waldron's back in the day.
So, but this is the only business that occupies this plot here, and so...
Yeah.
There's only one way, and then most people will probably be using not Empire Boulevard to make dangerous turns out.
Yeah, it may be, it depends on, you know, if there's more traffic coming, you know, from down Erie, they'll take a right-in, but if they're going out the same, if they want to head back, they'll have to go out Brand Point.
My only concern was just making sure that there was enough signs for the traffic flow, because this is a newer concept for this area of having a drive-through-only property, and you feel good that this is enough directional...
Yeah.
...flow for the property.
Yeah. And again, the two lanes with the capacity is great. Having this third optional lane as either a pass, a pass-by, or to stack more cars there, yeah, we're really confident.
And then where do the employees park?
So our lot includes the park, the existing parking spaces, when you come in off of Empire, those will remain in place, and just because they were there, and then there's some additional parking, yeah, as pointed out there. And typically, we will have four to six people on a typical shift working.
Okay.
Yeah, so to build on your question, you, the signage is appropriate, and you've used other locations the way you're asking for us, and it works well to get the traffic flow? Okay.
It's just...
No, good question, yeah.
All right, any other questions from the board on any of these requests?
No questions, but since the planning board has, they have not done final, right?
There's a, there's a couple minor things they have to work through, but one of the things, they wanted to wait and see what happened with the zoning board.
Yeah, but can we condition the approval on passing since there are area variances?
Sure. No problem there. So again, no phone calls, anyone in the audience care to speak about this? We have no electronic comments either. All right, then we'll...
Do we have to do something special to, from a standpoint of removing, because there's two requests on here for the larger sign that he's not, they're not...
He's withdrawn them, so...
Okay.
Yeah, I think the record's pretty clear on that, but yeah, no more pylon sign. All right, so I first will make a motion to declare this an unlisted action under Seeker and to further to issue a negative declaration.
Second.
Any further discussion on Seeker? All those in favor?
Aye.
And on the merits, I'll make a motion to approve the requests for five building mounted signs with the note that two of them are not advertising signs of any sort, but are really placed on the building for safety purposes. It's an exclusive, exclusively drive-through operation here, and we want to make sure cars know which direction they're going, so those signs will serve a legitimate safety The overall sign, square footage, I also would approve that for the reasons stated. It's on Empire Boulevard. Yeah, there'll be some repeat customers here, hopefully a lot from their standpoint, so they'll know where it is once they get used to it, but there also will be a lot of less frequent customers that make it important... there also will be a lot of less frequent customers that make it important for them to be able to see where this location is, and not just the location, but where to turn, and when they see those signs, they'll know that the turn is coming up, so I'm okay with the size of those signs as well. And then, similar point with the larger-than-allowed directional signage, again, it's a drive-through, there's gonna be a lot of cars moving, we want them moving in a slow and safe direction, and these larger-than-allowed signs will help that. So, for all these reasons, and frankly, it's in keeping, it's a plaza nearby, Empire Boulevard's a commercial area with a lot of signs, we have granted similar requests before, we granted them for Chili's, and there's other buildings that have more than one building-mounted sign, in fact, I would say most in that area do, so I think these are all reasonable requests that serve legitimate purposes and are consistent with our prior decisions, for all those reasons, I'd make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, good luck, thank you.
Did you do the variances, or the variance?
Oh, well, I don't think so, although I maybe said all the requests, but I didn't specifically mention the area variance, so I will amend my motion, and hopefully you'll amend your second, to include approval of the area variance, it's for the canopy, it's just slightly closer to the road than Chili's was, there isn't any indication that there was ever a problem with Chili's, canopy's definitely a necessary part of the operation, so, I'd make, amend my motion, include that approval as well, thank you, Andy.
I will second that amendment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome, good luck. All right.
When do you guys plan to open?
I don't think you heard yet.
When do you guys plan to open?
Well, probably, depending on when we get started, because of the, we get to get the cycle and approval, and then, I'm hoping in the spring, late spring.
Cool, cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Milkshakes look good.
Have you ever heard or seen of a milkshake that doesn't look good or taste good, I mean?
Fair point, Dan.
Yeah. All right, next application, please.
Right, Matthew Capano, 16, or, sorry, 1960 Dublin Road, Penfield, New York, 14526, request approval for an area variance under section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an agricultural building with less setback than permitted under section 250-5.1-F8 of the code at 1954 Dublin Road, the property is currently or formerly owned by Matthew Capano and is zoned RR1, SBL number 125.03-1-41.1, application number 25Z0034.
Okay, may we have your names and addresses, please?
Sure, Brian White from McMahon &amp; Ru Associates, 822 Holt Road, Webster.
Matthew Capano, 1960 Dublin Road.
Okay, thanks, so, we are here tonight to address your application for an area variance for a pole barn, I guess is a fair description, 40 by 40, which, under code, is supposed to be a minimum of 100 feet, I think, from the property line, it's already constructed, and it's about 29, 30 feet from the property line, is that fair to say?
Correct.
Okay, the property line, can we bring up the Google aerial photo, that was pretty good that they submitted?
The markup that we submitted, you're referring to?
Well, this is our GAS, it shows, here's the building here that we're talking about.
Right, I'm just trying to raise the point that the property most affected by this is also owned by the applicant, that's correct, right?
Yes, that is correct.
So, I assume as owner of the adjacent property, you don't have any objection to the owner's application to have that setback variance, okay?
I don't, and I'm happy to submit a letter to myself, if you'd like.
Very good, so, tell us, tell us what you use the building for and what you intend to use it for.
So, yeah, the property itself is vast, right? So, and the, I guess the largest requirement for square footage in that, in that structure is for equipment to maintain that property, and essentially, tractors, lawn mowers, all that sort of stuff, in the front of the property. When I purchased the property, the front and both the north finger and the south finger were absolutely wild, so, overgrown, fallen, dead trees, all that sort of stuff, I've been able to, I don't know, what do you call it, manicure, manicured the property such that it has grass within the 20 feet of the right-of-way, the edge of the road, and that's what I used the equipment for.
Okay, do you, do you have any intent to use the building for any other purpose that you are contemplating now?
No.
Like livestock, like, keep livestock in there?
My kids keep asking me for chickens, but I'm.
Don't do it.
I don't have, no.
I second that, don't do it.
I have a dog they don't clean up after, so, you know, that's, so, no, I don't anticipate that.
I think one of the reasons for the question, questions, is that, you know, the variance would run with the land, and if you were to sell that property to the north, what we're trying to avoid is a situation where you use that building for something that's gonna generate orders, and now your future neighbor, not you, but might be affected by that.
Yeah, no, I don't.
Okay.
That's a great reason why to say no to the chickens, so, I'm happy with that, thank you.
And also, did you see the email from a neighbor about that, so tell us, tell us about those, there's, and I, you know, it's such a big, I was out there, and I almost got lost just walking around a little bit, and I'm like, oh, man, I didn't even know whose property it was on to be, and then I saw a posted sign, and I'm like, oh, I'm stopping.
Yeah, so there's, the northwest aspect of the property has those two travel trailers, which are tow, tow, towable trailers that I inherited, my neighbor Steve told me that he owned half of them, so we can, no, so, but really, I didn't buy those, and I intend to take the structure of them down and use them as flatbed trailers to use around the property, because they're still, they're good trailers with good axles.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm happy to clear that out, I, you know, those, the perspective of those pictures, definitely interesting, but I'm happy to get rid of the structure that I think is why they had an issue, and likely, once I do that, or, you know, when I do that, I can move them to another part of the property, if they could even see them at that point, but I doubt that.
Yeah, I guess I'd just suggest talk to them, and you let them know that, they may say, okay, fine, and the reality is, if I'm understanding code correctly, if they're workable and usable, you know, they're okay, but talk to them about that.
Yeah, they, I dragged them back to the northwest corner, they were right on the gravel driveway when I purchased the property, so, they still moved then, but it's probably been a year or two, but, yeah, not, not anything that would inhibit, you know, I'm not in love with them, they're not, one of them had a tree fall on it, so it's, it's not a workable thing, it's just I have had not, I have not had time to address that.
It actually sounds like a pretty good, pretty good idea to use them for flatbeds, but, okay, anybody have any other questions about the variance?
No.
No.
I, again, haven't heard anybody's on the phone, there's no electronic comments, anyone in the audience care to speak about the area variance request? No, you're smiling back there.
Just as long as the variance doesn't carry me paying half of the tour.
Well, I was gonna make that a condition, geez, okay, all right, well, then we'll move to the consideration of this, I'm going to first, under Seeker, make a motion to declare this a type-two action, no further action necessary.
Second.
All right, Seeker motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then I'm gonna make a motion to approve the variance request, you know, the fact that he owns both lots is pretty important at this point, he's committed that the use of this is going to be for storage of equipment, and also that, you know, standard condition that the property being in compliance in all respects, he's gonna take steps to address the issue with the neighbors, which is great, I'm not gonna make that a condition, but I'm gonna take him at his word for that, which is a neighborly thing to do, I don't think that the barn, it exists, it's a nice building, it's a good property, he's done good things with it, so, for all those reasons, I would make a motion to approve.
Dan, do we want, maybe I missed this, but there were proposed conditions?
Yeah, there were, that Andy had listed about.
Yeah, that's why, we can put these specifically, we can relate these, but one that he, you know, bring the property into compliance and obtain all necessary permits, something general like that, that would cover that.
I agree, okay.
Can you run through those conditions for us?
Pardon me?
Can you run through those conditions for us, you have listed?
Yeah, I hear the recommendations was to obtain a building permit for the 40 by 120-foot barn from the building department, and comply with all conditions, requirements of the permit. The second one was obtain a floodplain development permit from the engineering department, and comply with all the requirements of that, and then the last is to obtain a grade-and-fill permit from engineering department, and comply with all those requirements of that permit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay with those?
Yep.
All right, very good, then we'll include those specifics in there, all right, any further discussion?
No.
All right, all those in favor of the motion to approve?
Do you need a second?
There was no second.
I'll second.
Yeah, very good, you know, I'm just testing you, you're all passing.
You all keep your jobs.
All right, so we did get a second, thank you, and let's vote on it then again to make sure, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that was the last application for tonight, unless I screwed up again, am I okay, or was that, was that the last one? All right, so, we will stand adjourned until the next meeting, thank you all very much, have a good night.